Welcome. I am calling to order the Sherburne Select Board Meeting of Thursday, August 28. It is currently 6:32 PM. In attendance, we have the full board, Marion Neutra, Dan Sickel, Jeff Waldron, Paul Duransis is remote, and myself, Stephen Tsai. I would like to begin by asking the Assistant Town Administrator to read the Executive Session Agenda, please.
Good evening. We have two items tonight. The first one is pursuant to general law, Chapter 38, Section 21A and 6, to consider the purchase, exchange lease of value of real property where the chair declares that an open session may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position in Section 21A and 7 to comply with or act on the authority of the Public Records Law, Chapter 4, Section 7, 26, 2 Whitney Street, and privilege written legal advice regarding same. Item 2 is pursuant to general law, Chapter 38, Section 21A and 6, considering the purchase, exchange lease of value of real property where the chair declares that an open session may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position to Leland Drive.
Thank you. Any amendments to the agenda?
No.
All right. Hearing none. Can I get a vote relative to, a motion relative to the agenda?
May I move acceptance of the agenda as read by the Assistant Town Administrator?
And I second.
All right. Moved and seconded. What vote? Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. And as the Chair, I do declare that an executive session is necessary for the purposes outlined by the Assistant Town Administrator, and I move that we enter executive session.
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded. Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. If you can...
Open the door.
Yeah. If you can let everybody in from the reading room. Alrighty. Welcome, everybody, back into public session for the Sherburne Select Board Meeting of Thursday, August 28. I will begin by having the Assistant Town Administrator read the open session agenda, please.
Good evening. After I read the executive session agenda, the Select Board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. I have not had any questions for public comments tonight. Items may be taken out of order and travel on anticipated progress and advance immediately. Item number one is the consideration of appointments to the Town Forest Committee. Nick Rodenhouse, from Associate to a Full Voting Member to expire June 15, 2028. Consideration of appointment of a new Associate Member to the Town Forest Committee. We have two requests from Sarah Raggy, which would be a new appointment, and Christine Collins, that would be a new appointment. And this is consideration of the reappointment as the alternate Building Inspector for Bob Fogarty for a term to expire June 15, 2028. Item number three is the discussion regarding Lake Street Cellular Tower Extension. Item four is the discussion regarding the landfill ground mounted solar. And item five is the discussion regarding the town campus sign. The consent agenda consists of the payroll warrant, a one-day liquor license from Claire Tremblay at Bonset at the Community Center, a one-day liquor license for Pauline Boundance for the Community Center, a one-day liquor license for Dan Carlson from the Hudson Brewing at Dalce Orchards, and a one-day liquor license for Michelle McKenzie for Superior Service at the Community Center. Select Board report, and then the Town Administrator updates.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
I want to propose one.
Okay.
That we, on the consent agenda, on the one-day liquor license for Dan Carlson, I think that one's just a little more involved than the others, and I propose that we pull that from the consent agenda.
Okay. So you want to make that its own standalone agenda to discuss?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess, can we...
Paul also had something.
Should we do each amendment one by one, or should we do both amendments? Or I guess, Paul, what is your amendment?
So, Fire Chief Zach Ward and I want to take a moment for a few comments about the passing of Fran Heffernan in a moment of silence, if we could do that at the beginning of the public session.
Oh, okay. Sure. All right. So then, really, we just have one amendment to the agenda, and we'll do effectively a public comment at the beginning. All right. Can I get a vote relative to the amended agenda as proposed by Dan Sickel? Sorry. A motion.
Yeah. I move approval as the open session agenda as amended with Dan's suggestion.
And I second.
All right. That's moved and seconded. Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. All right. So, first item is consideration of appointments to the...
Are you going to use the public comment?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Public comment, of course. Please, go ahead, Paul. I didn't write it down, so...
To keep the honest.
So, I want to mention to the community that a lifelong Sherburne resident, Fran Heffernan, passed away. He was a chief of the Fire Department. He began his service as a Sherburne firefighter in 1951. He was appointed as Deputy Chief in 1970. Chief Heffernan was appointed as Acting Fire Chief in 1976, and upon retirement of Chief Lester Klein, he was appointed permanently as Chief of the Sherburne Fire Department in 1977. He retired on December 31, 1998, due to mandatory retirement age, but this was after an extension of service was granted by law through the Massachusetts State Legislature through a home rule petition that was voted and adopted by the Sherburne Town Meeting. Both Sherburne Town Meeting and the State Legislature recognized his dedication and devotion to service. Although Fran Heffernan started his service as an appointed firefighter in 1951, he actually had experience fighting fires in his high school days as a substitute firefighter. He would run out of the Sawon Academy for the many brush fires that occurred in Sherburne in the mid to late 1940s. Under his leadership, the department started its ambulance service in the mid 1990s. Also during his tenure, the department created much of the water supply systems and practices that are still being used by the Fire Department today. He passed away, a wonderful servant of the town of Sherburne. Can I ask for a moment of silence? Okay. Thank you. If Chief Ward is on, he would want to add a few words. Is he on?
He's not, but I just...
He's in the middle.
John Dowse?
Yeah. I see John Dowse on. I don't know if John wanted to say anything.
Or Sean. I don't know if you know him, but I knew him pretty well. He sat in the chair and watched the town go by every single day in his chair out front of his house there.
He was 93 when he passed.
Yeah. He's a very nice person.
All right.
Thank you.
Now, we will move to the first agenda item, consideration of appointments to the Town Forest Committee. So, in our agenda, it's listed as Nick Rodenhouse from Associate to Full, and then Sarah Raggy and Christine Collins as new Associate Members. We have, over the past several hours and days, gotten quite a flurry of emails from the public to the Select Board in support of Christine Collins, not just as an Associate Member, but as the Full Voting Member. So, I just wanted to ask, is that accurate, that you are, your request is to be the Full Voting Member? I'm sorry. Are you Christine Collins?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just assuming, because I know everybody else in the room and not you.
No. No, I don't want to be appointed to the Voting Chair position. I understand that Nick Rodenhouse has served as Associate for a while, and that makes complete sense, so Associate Chair is perfectly suitable.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The Town Forest Committee consists of three members, and we recently decided to add one Associate Position, which is currently vacant. May I suggest that we create two Associate Positions, because we have two wonderful candidates, and make both of them Associate Members?
Steve?
Paul, thank you. It's not that I'm in disagreement. I would like to take that further and ask that you actually consider making it five, up to five Associate Members, because one of our wishes is to make our active group as diverse as possible, and if we could have up to five Associate Members without having to change the rules every time, it may be easier to find people to come in. But certainly, the board is very much in support of these two candidates being made Associate Members, and if you would consider changing that, allowing us to go to five, that would be great.
Okay. So, just who, what is the sort of makeup of the committee currently, in terms of who are the current voting members and who are the current Associate Members?
Sam Van Blarkum and myself are the two voting members. Presently, Nick Rodenhouse will become the third, we hope.
And you are just elected Chair, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Why did I think that we had multiple Associate Members already? Was that, was that just a bad memory?
We've had two.
Okay.
We've had, Nick Rodenhouse was an Associate, and Randy Robbers is an Associate.
Okay. Okay. So, if we were to add Sarah and Christine, that would bring us up to three Associate Members and three...
Just for clarity, I'm not, I'm not quite sure where the ruling of the number of Associate Members even came from, because maybe the Select Board didn't know it, but I was an Associate Member along with Betty Dowse, so we had two Associate Members years ago.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure where that even started.
Well, my impression, and Paul, correct me if I'm incorrect, but we, since the Select Board is the appointing authority, we can basically create and appoint as many Associate Members as we want. We are limited by the bylaw to three voting members, but we can basically add Associate Members willy-nilly as we see fit. So I don't know that we even need to officially expand the number of Associate Positions to five. We can simply say, as people come and go and decide that they want to be on the committee, and if, if the existing committee is in favor of it, we can simply add Associate Members as, as they want to be added. Is that true, Paul?
All of that's true, but let me suggest that there's actually a good reason to do five, and I'm going to support that proposal. If the public knows that there are five seats, you could get applications. If the public thinks that there's only three seats and they're all occupied, then an applicant's not going to apply. So I think it's better, if the Town Forest Committee is in agreement with five, I think it's better to, right now, establish five Associate Members, fill up with the, these two, and the one that is not the vacancy. So that brings us to three, and allow people to apply for the other two seats.
Okay. So then, the current, actually, you go ahead.
I was just going to support what Paul just said. Having a specific number of seats, five is general or something, I mean, above which it becomes unworkable, it becomes too big a group, but there is a value to having those extra voices in the room that are much more likely to come to meetings and participate and get involved if they are Associate Members, not just members of the public. And having five as a maximum, people know that there are, well, now if we have two Associate Members or three, they know that there are two places open, and we get more people involved. So I think that's a good thing.
Yeah. I just, I would give a counter to that. We have a lot of openings in other committees, so I'm not sure that this would be, if we already have three Full Members and three Associates, that's six people on the Forest Committee. We have some, you have the list, I have, we have some committees that are severely understaffed. So my concern is we're watering down whatever available volunteers there are, you know. Now, maybe someone that's only interested in Town Forest, but we have some committees that are pretty important committees that aren't full staff right now. So if someone said they wanted to volunteer to do something, I would push some of the ones that are severely understaffed.
Well, so would I, Jeff. That's a good point. We do have committees that are understaffed.
I think six, if we're saying that we have three full and three associates, that's like a pretty good number to me, so I wouldn't expand it myself. I was going to ask this another way. Steve, how did you come up with five? I mean, there's, as you said, would draw more people in, but of course, as a group gets...
It was more than three.
Okay. I was going to say, as a group gets bigger, and I don't know where the right number is, and I don't know the dynamic on the committee, but...
So it's not like you already have two people in mind that you know would be interested?
As a group grows, it can become harder to, you know, it can become harder to manage.
Yeah.
And I quite frankly have no problem coming back at you and saying, hey, we've got another member and we'd love to make an Associate. Will you appoint them?
Yeah. I mean, I admit that my gut reaction is the same as Jeff's, you know, but then, when Paul and Marion sort of made their arguments, I was like, okay, sure, that makes sense, and I'm, I'm feeling fluffing.
I mean, I kind of liked Steve's formulation of, you know, have six, and if someone else comes along who's expressly interested in this committee and the work that you guys do, then let's come back, then, you know, and certainly can add them.
Sarah?
Just if the Select Board would consider going through the process, and I know it's a lengthy process and it's a little bit cumbersome, of changing the voting membership to five and then having a couple of associates. I don't know. It's just, I put it out there, because right now, the Town Forest is having a lot of use, very use. It's all great, but it's three people, and, you know, which is fine. I mean, it's, it's working. I'm just wondering if we're having this conversation about three, five, and all these numbers, maybe just to have, like, the Board of Select and to expand from three to five voting members.
My, my understanding is that Town Forest Committees, it would require a special act of legislature?
It's state law that sets it to three.
Yeah. Is that a problem?
It's complicated.
Well, I guess what I would say is that it is complicated and it's time-consuming, but perhaps, you know, we have one way of operating now while the process is going on, but, you know, what if it takes a year or two? The town's getting bigger, the pressures on the forest are, are getting more magnified. It's just a thought.
Yeah. We can look into it.
It's worth considering.
We've done that with Board of Health, the Select Board.
Yeah.
That, that thought should go to the Town Governance Committee. Don't we, don't we have a committee that's looking at the...
But it hasn't, it hasn't been fully formed yet. The moderator is still recruiting. He's, when the moderator has enough people, he is going to come to the Select Board first to, because apparently, the bylaw says that the moderator, in consultation with the Select Board, will appoint the Governance Task Force, so it is, it has not been formed yet.
He's working on it.
He's working on it.
Who's moderator?
Jammal.
Mike Jammal? Oh, it was, oh, he's the Town Moderator.
Town Moderator.
Yeah. Okay. I thought it was a moderator of the Governance Committee or something. Because Corey Lincoln did it forever, right?
Yeah. Okay.
Could I respond to what you said, Stephen, about three versus five? I, I think if, if we stick with three now, we're going to have three and three, all the seats occupied, and then it becomes, to me, too much of an insider's game to figure out that somebody could volunteer for an extra seat, they have to be known to somebody and fit, and be told that we could expand it, all that, all that kind of stuff. I think if we set a larger number, it, it's a more transparent process. It's, literally leaves it up to the citizens if they want, if a citizen wants to work on the Town Forest Committee, they know that there's an opportunity there. The, the fact about volunteers is that you can't make volunteers work on things that they don't want to volunteer to. They want to volunteer, it's a wonderful thing when they come forward to volunteer, but they usually have an idea about what they want to volunteer to. So if somebody wants to, I don't know, volunteer for the, the Board of Appeals, and we say, no, no, you need to work on the Town Forest Committee, or vice versa, that they come to the town and want to work on the Town Forest Committee, and we say, no, 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 we want to divert you to a committee that's, that's shorthanded, they're not fungible. That's not the way volunteerism works. People generally don't show up and say, hey, I'll do anything, anywhere, no matter what. So I would, I would urge you to, to support going to five at this point.
Five Associate Members? Paul, would you clarify that?
Yes. Five Associate Members. Right. No, we can't, we can't change the size of the Town Forest Committee without a Town Meeting vote, a home rule petition, all that kind of stuff. That's, that's, that's literally years down the road. In the meantime, we need to fill a position tonight, so we can take Sarah's suggestion, as I say, give it to the Government Study Committee, and, and work towards the next Town Meeting. Maybe we have something in the April Town Meeting. But in the meantime, for a vote tonight, I'd like to move to make it five Associate Members, and that both Sarah and, and Christine...
Correct.
Be appointed.
That's your motion?
Yes.
All right. Motion on table.
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I think I'm still in, I think I'm still in preferring three camp. I mean, I'm...
You're going to make me be the tiebreaker, aren't you?
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with five. I don't think it's a big problem, but I'm, for what it's worth. Yeah. I agree with Dan, so...
I could go either way. I think it's not crucial at this point. I'd say now, for sure, three Associate Members.
Yeah. I'd like to do that and, and, and appoint Nick as the permanent member.
Yeah.
I agree with that, and appoint both Christine and Sarah as Associates.
Well, what we're saying is we have to vote this, that, hey, we have a motion, and it's seconded, okay? So that's where we are right now.
Steve, are you okay with that? Are you okay with if we decide to keep...
Stick with the three for now?
Stick with three for now? Yeah. All right. There's a motion and a second on the table, and it is to expand five Associate Members and to appoint Sarah Raggy and Christine Collins to two of those positions, so...
Let me withdraw the motion, if I could.
All right. You seconded it, so do you support the withdrawal?
I withdraw my second.
All right. So that, great. So it has been withdrawn. Let's get a new motion, sir.
Go ahead, Steve. Oh, or Paul, sorry. I was going to move that we appoint Nick Rodenhouse as a permanent member and Sarah and Christine as additional Associate Members.
Thereby expanding it to...
To three Associate Members.
All right. So that's the new motion?
I second that.
All right.
That's moved and seconded. Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Diane and Jeremy, I don't suppose either of you is keeping a running tally of things to bring to the Governance Task Force?
Christine, thank you for volunteering. It was great to read through your, great to read through your stuff, and thanks, Sarah. Glad you're doing this.
Thank you all. Thank you, Paul. I'll see you guys.
All right. Good night, everybody.
I know her super, super well.
And Christine, uh... Sorry. She lost Christine.
Yeah.
I was going to say, being a lawyer, there's a lot of other committees that probably could use a lawyer right now. Strange to say, but... All right.
She's a bronze medal.
Item number two, consideration of reappointment as alternate Building Inspector Bob Fogarty for a term to expire June 15, 2028.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
They need an alternate.
Thank you. All right. Is, is Bob Fogarty working at all in town right now, in any capacity?
Yes. He kind of slipped through the cracks when I did the, when I did the, the full appointment with the town in June.
Yeah.
So...
Okay. All right. So, moved and seconded already, right? Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. All right. Item three, discussion regarding Lake Street Cellular Tower Extension.
This is at 212 Lake Street, Mountain Missouri. There is a town-owned cell tower. It's currently leased to American Tower. The town receives about $30,000 in, on revenue for that lease. The lease is good through 2032. At the start of that lease, there was a settlement agreement that agreed to a certain height tower. At, at that time, there were, I think, 20-some-odd interested parties that were party to that agreement. Just as a bit of background as to where we're at right now with that tower, it sits on town, town land, it's owned by the town, it's leased to American Tower. American Tower put in a request to, they would like to add a carrier, they'd like to add T-Mobile to that tower, which in general is a good thing, in that the agreement provides that the town sees a revenue share from that additional tenant. However, they're currently proposing a 20-foot extension to raise the height of the existing tower by 20 feet, to add some more antennas at the top. They would rebranch the whole tower. It currently has a, you know, branching to make it look like a tree. They're suggesting that that sublease would net the town about $8,500 per year in additional revenue. Yeah. However, like I said, there is a, there is a prior agreement that sort of set that tower height, so there is a, a way to do it, should, should you want to pursue raising the height of the tower. You would need the consent of all of the parties, which could be pretty cumbersome and a difficult process, but could be done. Alternatively, you could say no to the tower extension and ask that American Tower you support in some way, adding a sub, sublease to it, but try to do it in a way that it doesn't change the height of the tower. in some way, adding a sub sublease to it, but try to do it in a way that it doesn't change the height of the tower and come back to you.
Would it require a town meeting vote to increase that, sort of allow the increase of the height of the tower?
No.
No, okay.
But could I make a comment?
Sure.
So this tower was very difficult to get established. First of all, it was on town forest land, so we needed an act of the legislature. And then when we got the Act of the Legislature, the measurements were a little off and we had to fix that. And then we got sued by the neighbors.
Butters.
And we negotiated a settlement in good faith. We agreed to cap this at a hundred feet. And we've faithfully kept that agreement all these years. And because my signature is on that, I don't feel comfortable doing anything other than to comply with it. They agreed to it, they dismissed their lawsuit, which was the a critical step in order for us to have that tower there. So the tower get built, it's it's worked well for the town all these years. It's it's a net revenue source for us with very little expense on our part. It's all good and it provides valuable service to all the residents there. That's what I kept telling the the property owners there. Like I recall telling one of the the neighbors who was objecting strenuously that if he had a heart attack at his house, he could not call on his cellphone because there wasn't coverage there. And this tower would provide that coverage that would make it safer for everybody, himself included. And so we're able to put this 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 deal together to now to increase the the height by twenty percent. I I just don't think that that's right. I would much rather see us accept the idea of having this T-Mobile on this tower, but have them fit on the tower at a hundred feet, not add that extra twenty feet.
Do we know if it's technically feasible to add a another carrier without increasing the tower height?
We don't know for sure, but it's it's likely. I mean, they would need to move some of the antennas around. They might not get their desired range, maybe a little bit lower. But, you know, it's up to them to decide if it's feasible and I bring back a proposal to you.
We have a lot of town, you know, equipment up there too for supporting the emergency services. In fact, the Holbrook Dispatch Center provided additional gear, I think, on both that, both towers that are installed on the towers.
I think we were, I mean, I can't judge the the technicality of this, but I think we we need to know what the alternatives are. And we don't yet know that. They haven't told us what they can or can't do with their hundred feet. But I agree with Paul. The first caveat I would say is let's see what they can give us at a hundred feet and then decide if there's something that, you know, is life or death that's needed for more feet. But if it's not, I think they maybe can figure it out.
Can I can I add a comment?
Yeah.
So virtually every town in the state has a a consultant on towers. There are outfits, there are these engineers all over the place, and we had one working with us who could answer all these questions. You you don't rely entirely on what you're being told by somebody you're negotiating with. You need your own expert. So if if we needed an expert, there is, there are plenty out there. And if we go through the files, you'll see that there is an expert that we had for this tower. Whether he's he's still in business, I don't I don't know. But I would suggest you first ask them to 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 fit it within the hundred feet. Then if they balk and if they say, no, no, we want the extra height, uh, then then we bring in the consultant. Jeremy made a good point that the point of the extra height is the range so that they can get a better range, but more coverage, the higher you go. And because they're in competition with other carriers, the one who's on the top often has the best position. But I also remember the engineer telling me that that some of the low the low-frequency carriers like Verizon do very well low down. So that it's quite, it's a complicated formula of what the frequency is and what what height works best for that frequency. I don't know T-Mobile's frequency. But I would suggest we 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 stay within the hundred feet. We initiate a discussion with them. We're all in favor of adding carriers to these these towers. That was our goal from the from the beginning. And that we see where that goes, but we do have a consultant somewhere.
Do we know how many abutters are there? In particular, how many were cosigners on the lawsuit?
Twenty, about twenty.
Twenty abutters?
I think they have all the paperwork, I have to just get it.
Slightly over twenty.
Okay, all right.
Because because we've also had the change of moving to five G towers, so which have a much shorter range because they're higher.
High frequency.
Frequency, so they're, if you go into Boston, they're all five G, but they're every mile apart. They don't go for it. The economics have changed, I think, with the five G tower.
Yeah, I would I would suggest that we go back to the, let's see, and let them know that, you know, we would like them to explore what options they can do without increasing the tower height and explain to them that the sort of history that this tower only exists because the town was able to convince the abutters that were suing to sort of compromise. And part of that compromise was capping it at a hundred feet and the town does not want to go back on that. So in the meantime, I would say we should also consider contacting the abutters and see how do they feel about the tower and how would they feel about adding twenty feet? Because it could also be that once it's in, the damage is done and adding twenty more feet doesn't really affect them at all. Is this the tower that also had issues with the the fake branches falling and making it litter? Is that anything that we have talked to them about and?
We we have, yes, we have, but this gives us a bit more leverage as well.
Sounds good to me. I'd be interested in knowing, I think they said they were gonna rebranch what the material is and whether there's some update on that, you know, with durability and so on. Like what Paul said, what Steve said, sounds right to me.
You can't really even see it that well, like from the beach or anywhere there, but if you come swim with me, you can see it really well on the far side of the pond, looking back.
Yeah.
It's pretty far above the trees.
So I mean, if there is any traction, there are ways where you can test out the height. Basically, you use a balloon, you put a big balloon up to the height that it is and let it sit there for a few weeks and let people weigh in.
Yeah. Sarah?
This is sort of an odd question, but and and Jeff, you're right in that I think a lot of the pushback came from people who live on the pond, who now this is their view.
Yeah.
If they increase the height of the towers, there's some point where they have to have a a light on it?
Probably, yeah, for it would get into the, you know, aviation space.
Yeah, well, that that might make a big difference to abutters or people across the pond who can ignore it.
That's a good point. All right, we don't need to vote on this, right?
No, no, I have your your guidance, thank you.
All right, what have we got next here? Item four, landfill ground-mounted solar.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
I have a guest here to help answer questions. I'm gonna give a just a little background. I think you're all aware that the landfill on North Main Street, you know, that there has been a desire to put ground-mounted solar on the capped landfill for some time. There had been some, you know, prior thoughts into this. So to do so requires a permit with Mass D E P through their Solid Waste Division. Basically, it's a it's a special permit to add ground-mounted solar on a on a capped landfill. So that's what it would be required of the whoever the installer is in the in the town. I know there had been some concerns in the past. Sean and I have been talking about this for a couple of years. We've talked to our consultant that helps monitor the landfill, Stantec, about this. We've gone through all the records of the closure that was fully approved and permitted through Mass D E P for the the closure of the landfill, the capping of the landfill. And more recently, with with Amelia coming on board and her experience with Holliston, Holliston just recently completed adding ground-mounted solar on to their landfill. So we've had some pro bono conversations with a consultant that Holliston used to to do that work. So that has helped inform sort of some comfort level in moving forward with this. Holliston, their landfill, solar generates about two and a half megawatts. Given the size comparing ratio, Sherburne's landfill could generate about point seven megawatts, smaller, but fairly significant. Put that in perspective, the the solar on the fire station is thirty kilowatts. So, you know, something installed landfill, you know, order of magnitude larger. Why this is coming now and with some sense of urgency is that the one big beautiful bill passed at Federal Congress will sunset the tax credit for solar installation, which is a thirty percent tax credit. That would, you know, would likely change the calculus on the the feasibility and benefit to the town. So with that sunsetting, the day, I think the dates are two thousand twenty-six. So it's coming up two thousand twenty-six. You would have to have something permitted and under construction and then have four years to build it?
Yeah, so the most contractors are worried about signing a contract for some kind of work before the end of two thousand twenty-five, simply because that's when the new measures for imports from foreign entities of concern get implemented and that raises costs significantly. So that would be the first sort of deadline. And then the the executive order that went with the O B B B A provisioned that five percent of the project costs, the budget basically allotted for it, whether it's coming out of the contractor who would be owning it or us who would be purchasing it, must have changed hands, must have been expended by July third, two thousand twenty-six, one year after the bill is signed. And then by the end of two thousand twenty-seven, in order for that tax credit to still be remained, to still remain valid, I guess, it has to be operational in some capacity. Now, that can mean, you know, oh, we can't make all of this operational, so we only turn on part of it, you know? Or, oh, it is physically ready to go, the panels are there, just ever-source's grid interconnection is dragging its feet. Both of those scenarios, you would still be able to qualify for the I T C. It's just a slightly shorter timeline than, you know, that people sort of winset in this in in how this usually works.
So the the process, if you want us to pursue further, that's why we wanted to start this conversation, if you would like this to, you know, explore further, would be to, I mean, likely this would not be the solar panels that were owned by the town likely would put out to get proposals from installers and then have some sort of power purchase agreement where they they own the the solar and the town sees the benefit of it. Those tax credits would be, you know, something that that installer gets, but would be factored into the agreement and proposal that that is provided to the town. So there there it's it's not a ton of time, but there is some time. We would need to to act fairly quickly, however, to to get an R F Q or R F P put together and on the street and, you know, to to meet the deadlines that are coming up, so.
What about distribution? You remember when the Gray family came to us on Maple Street with that was sixty megawatts or whatever it was that they were gonna put on Maple Street? But, you know, the ever-source grid is not, it it's actually required, it's not just tying up to the nearest pole. It's would need a higher capacity distribution network.
That would be part of the, you know, part of the R F P. You would have, you know, the installer, you know, carry through with the permitting and make the connections.
Yeah.
And deal with ever-source, there's a permit with ever-source to make that connection.
Specific numbers required in that. So currently, the circuit that runs through there would need, is at a point five megawatt limit. So obviously, we'd need some upgrades associated in order to support the load. There is a circuit just down the street that would, it would take some doing to connect to, but that has load available. For the anticipated size, which again, the it's only a size comparison, so the actual panel coverage could be much smaller depending on the actual quality of the land cap and the topography and such. But the developer, regardless of if we purchase it outright from them, would be responsible for the permitting and for the management of the grid interconnection. It, however, is a cost that comes from us to actually pay for whatever ever-source wants us to pay for grid interconnection. Because it is under one megawatt, it will not require a grid interconnection study, which can take very long. But they still might request an impact study that will likely not delay it by more than a couple of months, but that still has a cost associated with it that can can be up to in the hundred thousands. The of of the things that we can actually do with this grid interconnection, because there's not a lot of onsite load being offset by this system. If we connect it to the grid, it either supports in case of failure, which is always good for the residents, or it can be tied into community solar, which would take a little bit of doing, but is still something that's ultimately what a lot of municipalities end up using their solar for. If we owned it, then net metering, technically, alternative on-bill credits are not applicable here because the bill is microscopic. But net metering is potential use if we owned it to then just sell all the excess load. I ran some numbers on that and that could be about sixteen cents per kilowatt hour, depending on how ever-source's basic service charges continue to fluctuate for large-scale renewable projects. And that would amount to about two hundred thousand dollars a year of net metering credits. So even if purchasing would be more expensive than purchasing power agreement, it might serve to produce more benefit for the town overall and pay itself back only within a matter of years.
Could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the Select Board has already voted numerous times to support a solar development at the landfill. This is years ago. We had also discussed it at town meetings, so there may even be some town meeting votes. It was shot down by two considerations. One was the contours of the landfill itself and its angle towards the sun and all that's that stuff. And because of the problems we're having at the landfill with with. problems we're having at the landfill with, with leachate and whether we could get the necessary approvals. So we never, we never executed on the select board's approval of this. But I do recall talking to town meeting about it. They, it's, it's a project that was well received by the town, well received by the voters, well understood. It's, it's land that's useless to us. We can't use it for anything else, but you can use it for solar panels. In some of my other communities, we have gone and developed solar panels and they, they are, all these other communities rave about how wonderful it is. It involves very little work by the town and the benefits are tremendous, either in terms of getting a check or in terms of reducing offsetting bills, however you set it up. But the most frequent way people have gone is to, is to lease the land to an outside provider who does everything. And all we do is open the envelope and get, take the check out and deposit it. That seems to be the most popular way to go. But in any event, it's very much worth pursuing. Because I've already, as a select board member, voted in favor of this maybe five or six times. I certainly wanna continue that now. And let's see if we can't get this into the end zone.
Okay, a few questions. One, in terms of the deadlines, you had mentioned that a lot of the contractors are looking at an end of 2025 deadline in terms of the, because of the materials being imported. So realistically, does that mean that we would need to actually execute a contract with them before the end of 2025?
That I'm not so sure about. That would be another consultancy question because theoretically, I think it's just, that's when the imports become a problem, dot, dot, dot. Is there a way to purchase from, I guess, American solar, you know? And they have, you know, a lot of them are currently buying a lot of stocks so that they can at least continue doing some projects without running into those costs down the line. I think it depends on the feasibility of actually doing an R F P process that is, moves at a pleasant enough clip to be able to.
Oh, that would.
The alternative, of course. The alternative, of course, is just walking up to a vendor and saying, hey, would you mind doing this? And there are some of those and they are very eager to give us their business. But I do think that ultimately, because the town has not done a solar project of this scale before, it is more, the consultant that worked with Holliston, you know, gave us some hints. We did wanna look into that, but I think an R F P is probably prudent just to make sure that when we're trying to do this quickly, we're not being, you know, taken advantage of.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, given the value of this, there needs to, you need to follow Master Camera a lot.
Yeah.
Unless there's sort of something in place through, you know, some sort of statewide contract for this type of work. It would need to be bid in some fashion.
Yeah.
Likely through, and the best way to do it is an R F P where you have some performance metrics. You could do things, consider things other than cost.
And would we need to decide before we put out the R F P whether this was a town purchase versus a?
Yes, yes.
We would already have to.
Yeah, that would be part of, the, the R F P would be to put it out as a lease.
Yeah.
If it was to be a purchase, you would need to have appropriations.
Right, so we simply can't do that in time?
It happened, Sherburne happens to own the solar panels on the fire station because, you know, of the ARPA funds will help purchase those. The, the solar panels that are on the public works garage are a lease arrangements.
I will say.
Would probably use that sort of arrangement.
I will say that I was at a meeting this afternoon about this, but for Holliston. And the, it is, if we were to find a contractor in, you know, basically without going out to bid, their willingness, their hunger, I guess, would cause a little bit of flexibility. What happens with Holliston currently is they're working with Solect and Solect has given them the option, because it technically goes to the school committee, to decide, do they want a lease or purchase after they've already done all the structural assessment? But money has already changed hands for all of that. So I think, given the fact that we are way set back on this timeline, it would be prudent for us to come to that decision beforehand, even though theoretically, I don't think it's necessary in all cases. The other thing is that for whatever we decide, the lease or purchase outright, the contract that we would be signing would also be including the operations and maintenance and monitoring for that array, which is a steep expense. And, you know, if we wanted to just make sure that this was kind of, as Paul said, like as, as smooth as possible, just they put it there and we receive money for it, that would be implied in a leasing agreement rather than in a purchasing agreement.
And do we have any sort of like ballpark sense of if it was a lease and we did a power purchase agreement? Like, what is approximately the net financial benefit that we would be seeing annually?
Yeah, so if this was a rooftop system, it would be offsetting a load of the giant building that has the giant rooftop. Since this is isolated from that, it would kind of be up to us what we're using it for. I will say that if it is a leasing agreement, that is charged, that we wouldn't pay any upfront construction cost. They would just charge us a power options rate for the energy per kilowatt. So if this was a 0.7 megawatt system, that's what, 7,000 kilowatts? Is that how my math works? So that can run in the ballpark of like a thousand dollars kilowatt. That's seven million dollars or something insane paying back over 25 years. So for whatever the case may be, the, if, if the town's goal is to simply use it to make money, then that would be the option we would go with because there's no like load that we're trying to offset. There's no existing electricity costs that we're trying to offset the cost of.
Yeah, the installation on the fire station roof provides a little less than half of the electricity to power the station. And we're receiving $25,000 in investment tax credits, which is, you know, one third of the cost. We also get recs from that as well over time. So, you know, the, the cost benefit analysis is different when it's on a, you know, this electricity use on site. But, you know, certainly it would be, you know, a useful, useful space that has no other use.
Yeah, right. And then I guess that's my last question is, what is the risk to the landfill in terms of, you know, risk of damaging, causing?
This is in common, this is very common. They're ground mounted, you know, literally sit on top of. They have, they sit, they have some weights they sit on so they don't blow away, but there's no excavation, there's no.
There's no foundation or anything?
Foundations all at the surface.
Yeah, you put in the contract that you want them to take care of the landscaping, you know?
Yeah, no, I'm mostly just concerned about, you know, causing environmental contamination by disrupting the landfill.
Yeah. This is a very common practice.
Yeah.
An engineer. Over years.
So are you looking for a decision or a sensible?
Just looking for your support to expend some more, you know, some more effort on this.
Yeah.
And
So I have.
In a conversation.
Let's go out to bid, you know?
I have one, oh, go ahead, Marion, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, this town has almost no spaces that are already disturbed. Nothing else happening on them, no trees. I mean, yeah, it's the perfect place if it works.
I just think the odds are really not likely that people will be, you know, because these kind of funding sources are being pulled away overnight. Not, it may not be the end of 2026, whatever. I, I don't think there's much chance that we've got time to do this. I'm supportive, but.
You think.
It's a short future.
I'm pretty certain that.
You, you think the administration will just say, we're, we're not doing it, we're impiting the funds and forget it?
NIH and CDC, so I don't know.
We're not gonna put this money out there.
I just thinking there's a high degree of uncertainty among the vendors that.
So it, I mean, that might be another reason for signing a lease agreement and doing it in a way that it puts the risk on the contractor rather than on the town.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna get bid. I mean, if they're gonna bid on something, they're gonna bid on something. They're not gonna be doing a little tiny transfer station in a.
Maybe.
I would, I would actually argue, land caps are incredibly valuable for them because they have no fuss about what the actual asset is that they're putting it on. Land caps can't be really used for anything else, like.
Yeah, but I think the credits are, I, I agree with you, but I think the credits, there's gonna be a lot of uncertainty whether the credits are really gonna be there when they.
Right.
You know, this likely other communities or other situations.
Yeah, I, I'm not being a naysayer, I'm willing to support it, but I think our odds of getting this are pretty slim.
One question I have for you is if we were to sign a lease agreement, that would be for probably 30 years, 25, and then years to see if we wanna renew or what happens to that. Does something of that length technically have to go through like town meeting or something?
Well, I, I hear, we'll have to research. If Paul, was there any actual vote at town meeting regarding that?
Well, let me, let me just say that the general laws have been amended that allow the Board of Selectmen to enter into contracts for 30 years to lease land. The issue is that uses the word lease land and there's a debate among lawyers. Does that mean that we lease our land? Or does that mean that we lease someone else's land for municipal uses? But putting that little legal mess aside, the Board of Selectmen has the power to do this without a town meeting vote.
So, all right, so I have one, one small question, one big question. I, I'd be really interested in seeing more about the financials to sort of understand and how that, that would work and say, and a lease, since this is gonna happen on time, it's not gonna be a purchase, it's gonna be a lease, you know, what that would look like and the benefit to the town. You sort of spun through it quickly, but I would be very interested.
Yeah, I think that probably the easiest way to do that is actually to get a copy of the.
Holliston, well, that'd be great. I mean, I'd be.
It's a model. I mean, it would be, you know, a scale.
Scale, sure, sure. I mean, so if, if it'd be possible to get a copy of that, that would be a great, great place to start.
I will ask, Holliston works with a consultant separate from their actual solar contractor who works with Beacon Integrated Solutions. She's fantastic. And the model that she uses, I think theirs is slightly different because of the source of their costs and the I T C credit coming from a tax exempt source means it's 25.5%, it's a 30% or something weird like that. But I will request that and hopefully we can try to save.
I, I'd be interested in the question Jeff asked of just, you know, if the town were to undertake this, what are the risks and what could go wrong that would leave the town in a disadvantaged financial situation? And then one really small question. You had mentioned the December or end of year 2025 deadline relating to tariffs that will kick in on, on solar panels coming from the wrong places.
Basically China.
Yeah, yeah. So I didn't quite get that since if we signed a contract in six weeks, presumably, given lead times, unless they have stuff in stock somewhere within the U S already, lead times would mean the material would be coming, you know, when they're building it sometime in 2026 and they'd still be importing panels post the increase in the change in tariffs. So I just, I didn't, I.
I think it's just factors into the discussion of time and the investment tax credits are on a different timeline that's a little bit longer out than.
I, I could imagine a contractor saying, a vendor saying, it's really hard for me to estimate supply costs. Because one, you know, I don't have the materials in hand. If I order them, there's an eight week lead time. I might have to pay tariffs on them. Plus which, who knows, the administration could on January 6th say we're raising tariffs by 50% on this, you know? So I, I was just trying to think through those risks to.
January 6th?
Yeah, I picked that date. Just to ensure, just to, to make sure that we're, that the town wouldn't be, you know.
That is a fantastic question.
That we're minimizing all those kinds of risks.
I will look more into it. I attended an info session that should have made more sense to me. I think that the, it's semi arbitrary because of what you're describing. I think it's just that if they know that they're going to have to, basically, the construction costs for the actual system in a purchasing power agreement or a lease agreement are solely on that contractor. So it would just be built into whatever they charge us for per kilowatt hour. It's not like it's going to be an upfront cost that's suddenly jacked. It's simply.
Yeah, understood, understood.
Annual monthly costs. And that's fine, because that's just, okay, it's not as much money as we want, but it's still money that they're getting to us.
It'd be great to see the Holliston material if they're willing to share it.
I will look forward to that.
All right, do we need a vote or do you just need to have the temperature of that we all support?
Primary temperature?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think we all.
Support here, but also some realistic implementation setting.
Yeah, no, I think it's, I think we all support it. It's just a matter of trying to figure out what ultimately is the best way to move forward with the project. So we, we give you our blessing to continue researching.
That high voltage E V charging station, you know, we had that transformer took four years to get there. Four years.
Yeah.
The lower voltage one, we were able to get on right away. That was, it was already installed, all of it was installed except the transformer.
I mean, it sounds like the, the big risk is the risk the contractors are.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and we, you know, if we do, if we do, yeah, we wouldn't write it in such a way. But that, in general, that's what happens is the risk is on the developer. But then that affects the, you know, the, you know, what you're gonna see.
Yeah, when you're probably.
If a project, you know, gets one third done and then the developer dies because the financials change, that would be, you know, bad. That would be very bad.
Well, I'm just thinking, Amelia, in our resources, what's the best use of our resources? Is it worth trying to bid this if it's not a high likelihood of success?
Well, that's why it'd be interesting to see what, you know, the financials.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the contractor's risk or I'm worried about priorities.
We're, we're willing to give it a go and get more information.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Amelia.
Thanks, Amelia.
All right, next we have the town campus sign.
I'm already voted on that.
I think we're, I think all we're doing, we just have the new design and I guess we are just officially endorsing the new drawing. Is that basically it?
I have a problem with this design.
Uh-oh, all right, all right.
This was a request from Marion to add to the agenda.
Oh, yeah, all right, let's open it.
Was it, was it me?
Yeah, so was she with the last week? On the 14th, we put it on the agenda.
Wasn't me. Hey, if you've got an opinion, you.
In any event, the.
Give us your opinion.
In your packet, the revised design based on your comment from, from the last discussion you had in your packet, believe it addressed your comments. However, it's, it's in your bag.
Yeah, not a big deal, but yeah. I, me and signage, I mean, I have a complex relationship with signage because I usually don't like it. But this, the reason I don't, when I don't like signage is because they, they're not really clear to people. They don't communicate what you wanna communicate. And this sign, I think, is close, but it could be better. First of all, I, I've made the comment before that the council on aging, the, the way it's set up now, it, it looks like three different buildings or whatever. I would put the council on aging a smaller font and put it below town hall. And then below that, the police department in a big font because it's two separate buildings and it's really important that people understand that the police department is not in the town hall. And that arrow maybe a little bit, but not that much. So I would, it's, it wouldn't be a, it would be a very easy change. With the council on aging a smaller font, put that under the town hall sign. Police department. Police department, I would put that in caps. But even if it's the way it is, that's okay. Just so that it's made clear that the police department is not in the town hall, if they've got to go look around. And the arrow gives them a clue, but I don't think it's enough of a clue. So.
Wait, so are you saying council on aging goes on to the same physical sign as town hall or it still is its own?
It could still be its own thing, but make the font smaller.
Okay.
And police department.
I feel like my inner graphic design eye doesn't like that because one of my pet peeves is too many different font sizes. So then you have Sherburne Town Hall big, and then suddenly council on aging right below it, smaller. And then you have police department, big, possibly all caps. It, I don't know. My, yeah, my eye, I think would bristle at that sign.
Okay. Okay, I I I take that as good counsel.
I think that if you simply flipped the two, which you said council on aging.
That would be a big.
Above and police department as the bottom sign, I'm like, that that'd be, that'd be fine.
That's, I'd be fine with that.
As long as Chief Calvin doesn't mind being the bottom of the pile.
I do think that once you pull in, you pull past that sign, you pull in. Honestly, you won't know where to go to see the police department. You need another sign.
Yeah, there needs to be some way finding on site.
A way finding, finding once you're in the sign.
Also won't indicate where to go for the council on aging.
Correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm no, I mean, my concern is it doesn't say the library on there anywhere. Yet the library handicap access ramp is right behind town hall.
Right. I mean, I would be okay with no council on aging signs over it, but I mean.
They're, they're the ones that wanted the sign in the first place.
Yeah, I think because the sign, I mean, there's, there's already this sign there that doesn't, doesn't have.
Yeah.
That would, that would bring us back to, I think, the beginning.
They didn't get a senior center, so.
But it does still, I agree with Marion. It looks like there's three buildings. That's what I don't, I didn't want council on aging on there either because it's not a separate building. There's other offices in town.
Exactly.
And they're not listed. So if you really wanted to do it, you could put, you know, the buildings department and the tax collector.
Then the building and the sign would be, it'd be taller than the cell tower.
Be, well, we could keep it under a hundred feet. But and no one comes to town hall anymore. They do everything online. So and we're not gonna be open on Fridays maybe. So I don't know. Whatever we do is good.
I mean, you know, the putting council on aging prominently on there, I know it's a political thing, but I I think, you know, there are lots of ways that people know the council on, where the council on aging is. You don't have to have it on the sign, but if they feel strongly about it, it's okay.
Yeah, I mean, in my opinion, I, I don't think we should be rehashing what should be on this sign. I think we had that discussion before with the council on aging present and we voted and this is what we decided. I don't.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that, I think that I agree with flip flopping these two on the sign.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but otherwise, I don't, I mean, my opinion, I mean, I don't love this sign either. And but the problem is I, I don't have an idea for a better sign. And when I hear everybody else's suggestions, I don't like any of them. You know, so I'm like, okay, well, there's no perfect solution. And this is the one that we ended up voting on, so we should just.
So I'll make the motion that we accept the sign as is, but reverse the council on aging and police department locations on the sign.
What what's on the current sign?
Huh?
What's on the current sign that's.
It just says the town hall. Doesn't show, the council on aging are upset. The funniest thing to me is they want, where they have the most people coming, they come to the coffee hour. But that's not here. That's up at the community center.
And their palatial room up here is always empty.
It all came about because the council on aging wanted.
The, the current sign is basically just like the top two thirds of this.
More or less.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's some shrubs.
You gotta have another sign next to it that has a map of the town campus, you know, with a little you are here sign like.
And just to ask one last question, how, how is this getting paid for?
Uh, would be out of the operating budget for town facilities.
Okay.
Um, all right. So since we are proposing a change and I suppose somebody needs the go order to actually make the sign, right? So we should probably vote on it.
Yeah, is it worth just checking with Chief Calvin and council on aging if we're doing something different than this?
Um, all right, so we can, you've already made a, wait, somebody made a motion.
I made a motion, just knew what Marion described, just reversing the two signs.
Yeah, and can we just amend that, you know, pending approval from council on aging and police department that about flipping the signs, just in case somebody has a problem with it. And I want it coming back to us that the police chief is unhappy about being the lowest rung on the ladder.
That's fine.
All right. All right. So now there's a motion as amended.
I don't think anyone seconded it.
Oh, nobody's seconded motion? I'll second.
Yeah, okay.
It's moved and seconded, Marion. You're allowed to vote now.
Okay.
Dan.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Paul. Paul.
No.
Out of left field.
He's the Chuck Yon of the crowd.
The reason for the no is that I I think we're doing this on the reverse order. That is, we had discussions, we had agreements. Now we want to change the agreement. We should first get the consent of our partners on this and then take a final vote rather than take the, take a vote now and then go to them and say we're, we're changing the deal.
Uh, all right, duly noted. I vote aye. So.
Yeah, I'm not sure we had, they, we may have described, but we, we didn't have a physical.
Right, yeah.
Look of the, what it is right now, I don't think.
Yeah.
No, we didn't. We talked about it, but we didn't actually see.
I don't see it as being a material difference.
Yeah, I don't think so either. I don't think it's worth delaying it to the next meeting.
Just check in with folks and make sure.
I mean, I'm being sort of facetious. I don't think Chief Calvin's gonna have a problem.
Yeah, I mean, my only possible concern is that if the police department sum is too low and not visible enough, but.
It may require some changing in the landscaping. Right now, the shrubs do obscure the sign. So this needs to either be up higher or.
The, the shrubs would, would go.
Or adjustments.
Install the granite pillars. You just fill the shrubs and then we.
The blue arrow is key though, because that at least convinces you that it's not a different floor of town hall. It's a separate building.
All right, that took longer than I expected. All right, so now we are pulling the one pouring license out of the consent agenda, is that right? So that was. Which one was it? It was.
I would move approval of the consent agenda as listed with the exception of the Dan Carlson Hudson Brewing item.
Okay, so then we'll just do that one after.
Do that.
Sure.
And then we'll do the other one. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. All right. So you just moved approval of consent agenda with that one hold.
Correct.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, Marion.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Uh, Jeff.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. All right, now, Dan Carlson Hudson Brewing at Douse Orchards. Find it in here.
Twenty-three of the packet, I think.
Sounds like the wrong one. All right, so this is for a one day pouring license. Know that it's many days. Twelve days.
Twelve.
Six, seven, September six, seven, thirteen, fourteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and then October four, five, eleven, and twelve at Douse's Orchard. And the purpose of this is what? Two hundred attendees throughout the day, beer, wine, and cider. Let's see here. Okay, so is this, uh, is this, do they do this every year?
Or is this? I think this is a, something that there's, they would start, this would be the first.
First.
I think Jeannie's online. She might be able to get a smart contest and also John Douse's.
Okay. Oh, great. All right, I guess if Jeannie and or John, if you can give us more details on this.
Um, I can start. Dan Carlson sent an email. This is something new that that they wanted to do at Douse's, the orchard. I spoke with Jonathan today. They're hoping to bring more people in to pick your own apples, see what it is, maybe go down to the farm stand. It's a first, a first trial or just the first year they've done it. I also asked Jonathan if you just approve the first two weekends, just to see how it goes. I emailed Don Carlson and told him the same. And just take it from there. If you would feel more comfortable doing it that way. But the first weekend obviously is next week, so you want to decide for this one. Both police fire, they've signed off, building inspector. So it's, I guess it's in your court. If Jonathan wants to speak about it, that'd be great, but I think I've said what he told me today.
Um, so this is essentially Saturdays and Sundays in September and October.
Yes.
From noon to five P M.
And it's when they do their, your pick your own apples.
Okay.
I saw John unmute there for a moment.
Yeah, John wanna.
Yeah, um, Dan, Dan approached us a few months ago. And the idea is that he's gonna have a tent set up near our checkout, check-in shed. And he will have it staffed. And this is to add some more activities to our pick your own operations. And it's in correlation with the pick your own. So something we're gonna try. I know other farms have been doing the same thing, so.
Can I say something?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I've got a comment too.
I think that in general, we, we do support our farms. And it's very hard for them to stay alive in Sherburne, doing nothing but producing the produce that they, they, they do produce and, and selling it. So we agreed a long time ago that farm activities other than selling food should be encouraged within limits. I mean, maybe not, but it sounds like you're not expecting huge numbers of people because it's limited by the parking job, right?
Correct.
So, but in general, I think, you know, doing something different on farms to bring in more people is a good idea if it can be done without harming the environment. But I'm assuming that the last thing you would want to do is harm the environment of your orchards. So maybe you want to comment on how you would handle parking and trash and all those other things? And do you need a water source for this beer garden?
Probably need restrooms also.
And bathrooms, yeah.
We do, we do bring in port-a-potties for, for the pick your own operation. I don't have any water down in the orchard. We, we've always had trash cans set up down there. Parking is not an issue. We did the farm to table dinner down there and we did about a hundred and seventy people without any issues on the parking. So Dan, Dan's crew will be taking care of a lot of that stuff. So this is to, you know, it's kind of a value added to the operation down there. And that's what we have to start looking at is adding more value, added things to, to the farm stand and, and other activities that we do.
Well, I'm supportive of this, especially if you're doing a couple of weekends and by then you'll know if there are any problems.
So are you supporting all twelve days or just the first two weekends?
I think they're asking for just the first two weekends for now. I know Jeannie, in your email, you said that every day is a new permit. There, there are separate permits for each day. Is that correct?
Well, in the past, we have done multiple days under one permit. You, you can approve all of the dates and if it doesn't work out, you can pull it. That's up to you. This is just, I know that there were some questions about the amount of days that were on the permit. So to come up with a solution, it was suggested maybe approve the first couple of weekends. I don't think you're gonna have two hundred people there at a, the full, the full time. It's a come and go type of thing. So, but you, you, you can, you can approve them all. And it says right on the license, unless suspended, canceled, or revoked.
Okay. All right, Dan's first.
So I, you know, suggested that this not be in the consent agenda just because I think it's a little bit different than the other ones. I think the idea of doing this is great. I will find Saturday or Sunday to stop by and get a beer. It sounds lovely to be able to go, to be able to go do that. I think it's a great idea. And as John said, a nice kind of value add for the, for the overall operation. You answered a lot of the issues that popped up in my mind with, you know, bathrooms, parking, and just, you know, it sounds like that's all been, that's all been carefully thought through. Any issues with any neighbors who'd be concerned and have any issues? I, I'm guessing from the geography, not, but that was the one other thing that had occurred to me that might, might become an issue. John, anything, any, anybody in, you know, close enough by who might be unhappy?
I have a pretty good relationship with most of my neighbors down there. It's gonna be this, the traffic on the road, which is quite a bit with the pick your own anyways. They love seeing the open space in the farm and they'll do what they can to support, to keep it.
Okay, okay.
Would this require though, and this is Jeff speaking, John, would this require a food permit? Because I'm pretty sure it's a better idea to have the, if they're serving beer, to serve at least, you know, popcorn or some kind of food. So you're not just having people guzzle beer, you know, I don't know.
You can eat the apples if it.
Yeah.
We'll be selling cider donuts down there along with it.
Oh, that would help. They soak up a lot of things.
And I do have a food establishment permit, so, and I do have a popcorn vendor, so we could add those in.
I just don't know, you know, because usually, doesn't the Board of Health have to approve some of these things? I know they'll probably look at the bathroom facilities.
I mean, I was guessing since Chris Canny signed off, that he was, that he didn't have any concerns about that, I was guessing.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, if they're, if they're okay with it.
Uh, Paul.
So what I would say is that we have an obligation, I believe, as select board members to promote and support the business activities that go on in the town. These are all great amenities for our citizens. There are enough restrictions on the businesses that makes it hard to succeed in Sherburne. To me, this addition of these beer gardens is not only an excellent idea, but I believe it will bring in people from outside the town and therefore enhance our, our local economy. So for all those reasons and for the reasons stated by Marion so eloquently, I'm a hundred percent in favor of giving them the, the, the whole list. If it turns out that there's a problem, we can have another meeting. We can meet with them, see if they can't fix whatever problems arise. But I think we oughta do what we can to support the businesses in the town. Thank you.
I'll give you one caveat too, John. When I was growing up, I picked apples every summer and every fall at a tiny orchard in central New Jersey, and I just have been down in New Jersey for the past seven weeks, and they added beer hall along the way. Now they've cut down a quarter of the orchard to triple the size of the beer hall, so. We're, we're relying on you not to do that.
I, no, I don't plan to do that, so.
It was, I was really upset because it was a beautiful orchard like yours is, and now it's pretty much a beer hall.
Um, all right, well, I, I am also in, um, favor of, uh, essentially just approving all twelve days. Uh, I am glad, Dan, that you chose to pull this out of the consent agenda so that we could have the discussion, but, um, like everyone else, I am in favor of, uh, supporting our farms and also, uh, you know, in favor of, um, spreading more alcoholic cheer throughout the, uh, fall season. Uh, and, uh, maybe, maybe I'll have a beer garden, uh, at my farm stand. Would you guys support that?
You added the eight acres, you told us, or five acres or whatever.
Well, that's all useless. Uh, the produce is coming off of, uh, some, uh, Rural Land Foundation land. Uh, well, I'm on Green Lane, but the, uh, but the, the land that, that, uh, is, is, is being farmed is on Brush Hill.
So can I move?
Maybe the beer garden will be on Green Lane.
Paul, just, I second, Paul's just made the motion, I'll second it.
All right, moved in seconded. Uh, Marion.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Uh, and I'm aye as well.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Uh, yeah, all right, that was consent agenda. Uh, what's next? Select board reports or tea?
I have a select word.
Yeah, select word reports. Go ahead.
Um, I, I'd like to report on something that our, our fire department has been up to that you may not be aware of. Uh, it, it sounds pretty serious, but actually it's not. Can I share my screen?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, you may not know that, uh, let me get rid of this little thing. You may not know that our fire department responds to, uh, lemonade stands. And I caught them at it a couple of weekends ago because we happened to have a lemonade stand on our street, uh, put on by the, the little kids that you see in the picture. And suddenly here comes the fire truck, uh, two fire trucks down the road, and they all stopped for a lemonade. And the kids were just, um, they were just floored. They were amazed. And everybody had lemonade, and the kids got their picture taken by the fire truck. It turns out that Zach and his crew have been doing this when they're out on, on, on training drives. And, uh, I thought this was pretty cute that he sent me afterwards. He said, another day, another driver training, another lemonade stand. So I just wanted to shout out to Zach, that, you know, they're, they're going above and beyond, I must say. That's all I wanted to say. So thank you, Zach.
Nice.
It's a backup water supply for the lemonade, huh?
Oh, if they could fill the fire truck with lemonade, that'd be good.
Yeah.
I have a very brief report.
Yep.
Uh, so I was able to join the walkthrough at Millburn Farms with the, um, pardon law, which the planning board recently approved. So I just wanted to say that I thought, there were, there were two things I took away from that. One, the land use team that was there. Um, our folks were terrific in asking what seemed to me to be all the right questions. And I was also impressed that, um, the folks from, uh, the trustees seemed like they wanted to work really hard to be good neighbors. I know some of butters have had some concerns. Um, I'm hopeful and confident that any of those will, you know, be, be handled well. But I was really impressed with pretty much everything that our land use team said, hey, could you do this? They said, yeah, yeah, we'll take care of it. So it was, I thought.
Yeah, was Doug Brown leading it?
Uh, no, Doug was not there.
Yeah, because I'd walked that, probably seven months ago with Doug at length.
Yeah, I think I was with you.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. You were with us that day, yeah. So we, we, you know.
So it was just, it was just a good.
And we took him over to see the, the one and over, you know.
Right.
The Amelia Peabody one, it was rocking arrows. Not rocking arrows, uh, in the Anna Woods.
So anyways, I was just, it was just a good outing. I was impressed on both, both, both sides.
It's gonna be pretty cool.
Yeah. Um, Paul, your hand is up. Did you have a select word report or is that from before?
Uh, no, that's from before, sorry.
That's right. Um, any others? All right, no? Town administrator reports?
Yeah, I have a handful. Um, wanted to give a, a shout-out and thank folks for coming to the town hall, uh, barbecue or, uh, cookout earlier this week.
I'm sorry I missed that.
Members that could come.
Good.
Um, also wanted to thank Diane again for, for orchestrating that and thanking all those involved, um, Public Works for helping, but thank you Diane.
We wouldn't have been able to do it without Public Works.
Public Brewing, yeah.
Or you.
Saved the day for me.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Actually Pam, Pam, you still on? Um, wanted to, to make a, an announcement, uh, that with, uh, you have a, a debt issuance coming up, and we had a meeting recently with S and P, um, to rate that debt. Um, and we heard today that your triple A bond rating was reaffirmed, so.
Next one.
News.
Wow.
Um, thanks to Pam, Deb, um, and, you know, all that were involved. Lots of, lots of hard work there and, and a great outcome. Thank you. A little update on the town clerk. Um, so fortunately Jackie's retiring shortly. So we've had an interview, we had a candidate, we made an offer, unfortunately. Um, she's declined our offer, uh, even with some follow-up, uh, conversations. Um, it's, she's currently a clerk in another community, elected clerk, and in any event, um, unfortunately, we, we don't have any, uh, other viable candidates, so we've re-advertised the position. Uh, we're gonna hit the local newspapers this time around, so not only the, the professional websites for the Town Clerks Association and MMA, uh, but Diane is also re-advertizing the local papers to see if any folks we met, um, can help out too. Um, Jackie is willing to help in the interest, so you will see, unless we get some other candidates shortly, you will see, um, you know, an interim appointment come before you for, for her assistance. We'll, we'll discuss with her what, what her retirement schedule, but a couple of days a week. But we'll, we'll do our best to keep that interim appointment for a minimum, uh, but she's kindly offered to help. A quick, uh, update on the summer hours that we've tried, so, uh, unfortunately, we'll, I guess, come into an end because tomorrow is the last day of town hall not being open on Fridays, so we'll resume the normal schedule next week in September, but, um, by all accounts, um, it, it went well. Uh, didn't hear any complaints or, or issues. Um, heard a lot of, um, positive things about having the longer hours, that I know, I know everybody here in town hall appreciated it. So just wanted to say that I think that went well, and maybe, um, we'll consider it again next year. Um, but also could be something that you wanna consider in general. Now that we have some experience, is, is Friday, um, do you keep town hall open on Friday? Is it, is it worth, is it worth it, or is the, the value of having longer days and later opening for the public, um, the other four days of the week more valuable? So, just some food for thought there, but we'll be going back to the normal schedule for now, starting next week. We had a meeting, I know, we, we've talked at one of your prior meetings about one of your initiatives for the coming years to, to look at, um, on, um, alternatives for the, the health insurance that's provided to, to staff and, and how that impacts the budget and what, what process might be involved in reconsidering and, and looking into that. So, uh, we have met with a consultant that does this. She actually, um, helped the last time the town did this, um, which was some time ago. It's been a while. Uh, her name's Sue Shaloo. She was with Cooking Company prior, and now she's in the old group. Um, she, um, offers services on a annual flat fee basis to, to help communities with this complicated process. So, um, you know, in a response to your, you know, desire to look into it, uh, we'll likely, um, enter into an agreement with her to help our, help us investigate what alternatives there are, um, bring those to you, uh, and help initiate that process to, to, you know, negotiate and, and, and talk to, uh, the various unions and staff about what alternatives are, so.
I think when we had that discussion last, we also discussed possibly reconvening the insurance advisory committee. Is that something worth pursuing or?
It would be, yes, that, that is, that's something worth pursuing. It's an advisory committee. Um, I think having Sue on board would help the insurance advisory committee. Uh, what I recall was that you, you preferred more of an ad hoc committee than a formal appointed committee, just to give that committee a little more flexibility.
Yeah.
Uh, but having Sue on board, uh, and a gathering, some, you know, sort of a working group, uh, you know, we can, we can operate that way to, to help, you know, then there would be some actions that the select board would need to take, so. Uh, you know, all that work would help inform what future decisions you might make.
She's specifically expert in medical.
She is, yeah, this is what she does, um, is, is advise, um, municipalities and, and companies on health insurance. She knows the best general laws that, that kind of guide this process very well.
And the options. Your mistress is that one.
Yeah, and, you know, my, our carrier will provide also put input into this as far as what potential benefits there might be to premium costs and whether there'd be some back and forth with her and, and the carrier and, and you folks and, and, you know, the broader town staff. But this is kind of the first step in that. Let's see. Next, uh, just a quick update. The North Sherburne Water and Sewer District had a meeting last week where they were introduced to Toll Brothers. Toll Brothers gave an update on the project and project permitting, schedule forward, and also had some, um, requests of the commission, the district, uh, for assistance and what they can be doing to, to help with the projects. Um, so that was a great meeting. Um, we do plan to have Toll Brothers give a, uh, a more, you know, public, broad, um, update on the project. That's looking like it may be sort of early October to give Toll Brothers the benefit of doing a little bit more of the onsite testing. Uh, but they are, um, you know, we're, we're gonna be planning some sort of public information meeting, um, for the general public on, on the update for the sewage crossing and medical comment. And then finally, um, just an update, we've been working on capital appropriation for the replacement of the town hall meeting room furniture. We've had our working group meeting, we've got a price quotation, uh, we have, um, all of the items selected, um, and ready to go, or ready to enter a contract. The price increase, there's a price increase.
On Wednesday.
On Wednesday, so we're likely gonna enter the contract, um, after some negotiating with them. But if, just wanted to bring it up that, you know, if there's any, any issues with, or questions on color or sizing or, or anything. I think we've got it pretty well worked out, but just wanted to, to offer that up. You can reach out to me offline, um, if you have any, any specific suggestions, but.
We're the ones that took nine months on a sign in front of the building, okay? Don't let us pick carpet out.
And then tried to change it after. Sure you've had a very sensible process.
Exactly.
This furniture is going, can, go down.
We got the Douse's keeping an eye on you, you're.
They're gonna take it all.
Yeah, they'll take all the chairs.
I was gonna suggest that it be donated to the new museum when the museum is built. They're gonna need furniture and they don't have any.
I thought, I thought you meant as exhibits on antique furniture from the town hall.
I love these tables though. Look how big they are, I mean.
These are going to DPW, right?
Yeah, and they'd like the chairs.
They wanna take all these.
Yeah. You know, I think there's, there's, you know, there's probably a surplus of them.
Take the tables too.
I mean, look how long this is.
Is the new table, new table's gonna be wood again?
No, they would be sort of laminate, um, neutral colors.
You're, you're looking for like Thomas Moger furniture or something?
Solid wood tables, aren't they?
He used to have the chalkboards on all the walls.
Oh, that'd be nice.
No, they, it was here, where I, we used to come vote and.
Oh, because it was from school time, so of course.
Yeah, the chalkboards were still on all these walls. You can tell, Marion.
I wasn't, I, I was being born.
Yes. You might not have been voting, but you were born.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
In July, the Recreation Commission went out to bid on the pickleball courts and the tennis courts. What, did those bids come back and what were the results?
So there were actually, there's, there's two bids that are out on the street currently, Paul, the, the pickleball courts, the tennis court, tennis and pickleball courts are currently out to bid, um, with bids due back, um, third week in September. Um, along a similar timeline is the rebid for the Laurel Fields irrigation. That is being rebid for, uh, because the bids came back too high, so that project was, the engineer kind of re-looked at it and, and updated some of the, the design and were out to rebuild, so. But in about three weeks, Paul, we'll have pricing back on the courts.
Great, thank you.
Who, you'd be back from Nantucket in three weeks, Paul?
I don't know if I'll ever come back.
We'll take that as a threat.
Um, all right, is that it? Paul, do you have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, moved in seconded. Marion.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. Thank you.